The regular meeting for the Iredale County Board of Commission for December 16th is called to order. The invocation this evening will be delivered by Vice Chairman Norman.
Let us bow, please. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity just to be here. We thank you for the work we do tonight for the citizens of Iredale County. Lord bless the troops that are home and those that are far away, that you keep an eye on them as they travel home during the holidays, and those who don't get to travel, stay over across seas. Thank you, that you bless them, Lord, and you bless their families. Again, bless this night, and let me pray. Amen.
Please stand for the pledge to lead.
My pledge remains: To God in the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, there are no adjustments coming from the staff.
Any adjustments from commission members? There are no special recognitions or awards on the agenda tonight. First item, under item six, appointments before the board, a request from the Iredale Arts Council for permission to place a sculpture on the old jail property.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to present this request. We thank you for everything you do for the Iredale Arts Council, which we could not do what we do without your help. The request is to place a still sculpture of a non-objective nature, more of a formal piece, in the corner of Court Street and meeting to kind of make a landmark of the arts, the function of the Arts Council, on the old jail building. The sculpture is also of a temporary nature. It would only be there for a year and then removed and replaced by another piece under the approval of the county commissioners and all the other agencies and organizations involved in government, city government, too.
This matter was discussed earlier on our pre-agenda meeting. Are there any comments or questions from members of the board? Entertain a motion from a member of the board?
Chairman, I move we would grant this request.
Are there any comments on the motion? All in favor of the motion from Commissioner Johnson, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Second item on appointments before the board is a request from the Fraternal Order of Police to erect a monument at the old courthouse site. Mr. Ron Wyatt.
Good evening, gentlemen. Fraternal Order of Police would like to construct a monument for officers that have served in Iredale County regardless of which agency that were killed in the line of duty. Their names would be on the monument. We would have a couple verses from the Bible also indicated on the monument, written on the monument. We definitely would work with the county staff to follow any recommendations that you all have on placement, approval of wording before it's etched, et cetera.
Are there any comments or questions from the board?
Yeah, I was, you know, first of all, I would say that conceptionally, we're not, I don't think there's any opposition to, for there to be some sort of recognition. Personally, though, I really would like to avoid something that looks like a tombstone.
Okay.
You know, in our pre-agenda meeting, we were talking about, you know, what constitutes art and all that kind of stuff, and I freely admit my tastes are old-fashioned and some people may say they're outdated. You know, I think appropriate art is George Washington on a horse, you know? But to do something that honors fallen law enforcement officers is fine, but I just don't want it to look like they're buried there, okay? So I would say that would, you know, I have a concern about that, and then also, I just think in the front of, in the front, we're pretty limited in space, so I can agree to the concept, but I would like to see some more details before I buy in on anything beyond that.
Mr. Wyatt, we see here that says we prefer the old courthouse site, but do you think that's the most appropriate place? Because obviously, over at the other courthouses more lends itself more to law enforcement.
Most of the names that would be on this monument, this is where they worked and served during their careers. And considering the new courthouse site, whether it be five years, 10 years, 15 years, we expect there to be some construction and some renovation done on that site. In speaking with clerk of court and some other elected officials, instead of it being a county burden once a monument's installed, we fully expect to pay the complete tab. With all of those factors discussed amongst our committee, we just felt like this site would be the most appropriate. And walking the sites with County Maintenance Director, Robert Woody, we found a couple locations here that we think would not mess with any aesthetics of what's already on-site, and if anything, could even add to a couple areas to where it would look aesthetically sound. And that, all those reasons together is why we felt this site would be better than going over there.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Any further comment? The chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Hold on a second. What are we approving?
Request to erect a monument.
Can we, I don't think I'm, I think, excuse me.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, how about if we accept the, I mean, I would be in favor of to accept the concept, but not, I'm not ready to cart blank, say they can put, anybody can put anything on these grounds without us knowing specifically where and what, and right now, you know, we're not there yet.
He just said he walked through at the, our county employee.
Yeah.
Looked at a place.
He looked at a place.
Yeah.
Where is that place?
Robert Woody.
No, where is the place?
Well, now, that's Robert Woody. It's right, the first option was right beside the door in the adjacent building going into Neathken Law Firm. There's a 10 by 15 area there. If you're walking up the walkway toward the courthouse front from Center Street, it would be off to your left, kind of in the shadows now. And I do understand your concerns and have no qualms with those. And by all means, before maybe we get the full approval, we're in complete agreement that each step of this needs to be approved, you all see it ahead of time, so that it does benefit the overall picture of what we're trying to do out there instead of just something being installed.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, if I may inquire, Mr. Norman. Mr. Norman, I'm assuming that your, inheriting your motion was a direction to the staff to collaborate with these folks and find a mutually agreed-upon area?
That's correct.
Okay. That's the intent of the motion, and I support it, Mr. Chairman.
So, the issue is supporting the concept, but the execution of the concept is subject to review and ultimately a vote of this board to approve whatever the final proposal is in terms of aesthetics and placement.
Yes, sir. And specifically, just so we're all on the same page, I agree with Commissioner Robertson, we don't want a tombstone out there looking like somebody was buried in it.
Well, with those elaborations on Vice Chairman Norman's motion, the motion stands. Any further discussion? Being none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Wyatt.
Appreciate you all serving the community, too. Thank you, gentlemen, for your service.
The next item is a request from the City of Statesville for matching funds in preparation of a new airport layout plan and environmental assessment.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm David Courier. I'm the Planning and Development Director for the City of Statesville. The Statesville Regional Airport is housed in the Planning Department, and what we are requesting tonight on memo three is your participation in 5% of funding for the latest grant, state grant received for the airport development. The state grant is in the amount of $261,540. It requires a local match of 10% or $29,060 for a total package of $290,000. The items to be addressed in this state grant are the Airport Layout Plan, or the ALP. This is a, the ALP or the Layout Plan is basically, it's a heavily engineered future of the airport with all the technical detail and data. Included in the Layout Plan, you have the layout drawing of the airport, you have airspace drawings, approach surface drawings, terminal area, hangar areas, land use, right-of-way or runway departure surfaces, and property maps, runway protection areas, et cetera. It's an extremely detailed document. It is required of every airport, and it's time to update for Statesville. The second part of the grant is for an environmental assessment for the runway 10 to 8, which is the primary runway, for a south parallel taxiway. The FAA is requiring the construction of a south parallel to conform with our new instrument landing systems, or they were installed in '05. And it is an extreme safety factor for all the corporate jet craft who are housed or hanged south of the runway. They have to taxi across active to get to the taxiways for takeoff operations. So we are requesting, as we have for many years, your partnership in sharing the 5, or the 10% local match.
Is there any discussion or comments from members of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll just add to what Mr. Courier said. I think this is probably the most comprehensive airport layout plan that we've had. We requested to the state that would be allowed to extend it as far as land use further out from the airport than we previously had, and they agreed to fund that. So I think it'll be a document to be very beneficial to us in future planning for the airport.
Mr. Smith, what is the budgetary line item that this will be coming out of?
This would come out of Economic Development, Statesville Airport line item, and think it, we could prepare a budget amendment based on your allocation tonight if you'd like to do that.
Any further discussion? Being none, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move we approve this request.
Motion is made by Commissioner Johnson to approve the request. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. And if you'll prepare a budget amendment, it'll be January 6th. I'll take that as it.
Yes.
All right. The final item on appointments for the board is a request from the City of Statesville for partial funding of a new Statesville Regional Airport manager position. Mr. Courier?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, if you haven't been to the Statesville Airport in the last 10 years, you would be absolutely amazed at what has happened out there. The airport, basically, we have a 7,006-foot paved runway. It's rated at over 98,000 pounds for dual axle strength for weight of aircraft. It is 100 feet wide. It has high-intensity runway lighting. And the most important feature is the ILS, or Instrument Landing System, that brings pilots in in inclement weather. So we're basically open 24/7. You don't have to divert to Hickory or another ILS station as you used to. That has greatly enhanced the economic development measures out there. We probably, well, we, not probably, we do have one of the best, three best general aviation facilities in the state, and our main competitor is Concord, which is not too far away. The Statesville Council appoints an airport commission to work with the staff on the airport development. This is an appointed board, and the county commissioners appoint a member to this airport commission. Commissioner Johnson has been on for a long time and certainly is currently serving and has served as chair of the commission. Back in August of 2014, the airport commissioner, I lost my staff member in my department who tended to airport matters, and the airport commission, at their meeting, suggested that we seriously take a look at hiring a full-time airport manager or employee. Up until that time, the city basically put or budgeted roughly a half at the most of a position to tending to the airport. And I can tell you that, and I started that in '78, I can tell you that this Statesville Regional Airport has greatly outgrown a half a staff member's attention, and I'll kind of show you what we've done there. So, the airport commission did recommend this to the city council. Earlier this month, the city council, after hearing the presentations on the potential staff member, basically made the following motion. They made a motion that the, we have an airport description, which is in your packets, or a manager's description, with a salary range. The city council in the motion said to the staff, "We would like to hire a professional, seasoned airport manager. Do not look at the bottom of the salary level, the entry level. The staff has the flexibility to go from bottom to top. Hire somebody who can hit the road running and do the justice to the airport." They also asked, as we are here tonight, that the commissioners from the August Airport Commission meeting consider funding 1/3 of the position. They requested that the funding be for a five-year period so we can get some stability to the program. And they also instructed the staff that we were allowed to go ahead and advertise for the position, but not to hire the position until a marketing study is done. The council is, I guess, and maybe to put it in lay terms, they're looking at taking the airport to a higher level, and they want a marketing plan, and they would like you to participate in that. We'll come back to you later on that when we have numbers. The, you have a copy in your packet of the airport manager's description. You will see that there are a number of references to the marketing aspect, which was brought up at the airport commission. Mr. Smith, in his memo to the board, put basically 50%, and I probably gave him that figure for a marketing value. In my reassessment, including enormous amounts of grant work and grant monitoring, which embedder the airport, which is a marketing tool, I'm of the opinion that it's more along the lines of 66% or 2/3 of this position would be dealing with marketing the airport. An interesting feature with the airport, and I'll just tell you, some of you have been around and seen this, and Commissioner Johnson has, but in 1998, the total tax value, the aircraft value at Statesville Municipal Airport then, was $15,900,000. In 2012, $251 million of taxable value. That's how the airport has grown. It started with Dale Earnhardt and Champion Air. Of course, when Lowe's Corporate came in, major boost, but as the race teams and the hanged aircraft have evolved, I mean, we went from $15,900 to $251 million. That's a success story. And the interesting thing is that's just the beginning. With full-time leadership, direction, and marketing, who knows where it can go? The interesting thing, and this is, one corporate jet, and we have a number of them out there, delivers the same tax value as roughly 100 households or homes in Iredale County. So one jet equals 100 households, or household in Iredale. The tax value is incremental, and the service delivery on that jet is nominal, so it's great economic development. I mean, you've seen the Lowe's numbers. The, I guess when I look at it, and I get kind of excited with the airport, but if you build a mile of road, you can go a mile, you build a mile of runway, which we have as partners, you've got the whole world at your fingertips. So we would like you to consider funding 1/3, and Mr. Smith has said a fixed number, 1/3 of the benefits and the salary for a full-time airport manager. I did mention roughly 66% marketing. We do not know from beginning to end of salary, or low to high, where this person will come in. We just don't know that. But I can tell you that council has said, "Hire the best you can get." So with that, I'll try to answer any questions. Excuse me, I have council member Mike Johnson here and assistant manager Lynn Smith, if you have any questions of them.
Okay. We discussed this matter at the pre-agenda meeting, and Commissioner Johnson, as a member of the airport commission, brought us up to speed on a lot of the background information, and this is a great collaborative effort and endeavor that's a force multiplier and an enhancer for our economic development and our tax base. So we're very pleased to be joined at the hip with you in this process. Is there any discussion on this item?
You said there was, what, $215 million of, is that the figure you used, 215?
Mr. Robertson, we, in 2012, $251 million worth of taxable value.
Taxable? Was it taxable? I mean, because if we've given an economic incentive of 70 or 80%, that's not taxable.
The only incentive we've given was to Lowe's.
Okay. So the rest of them are 100% taxable?
That's earned out by now, I'm sure. Well, let's see, it was the second five years. Pretty close to that being paid out.
Okay. I was gonna ask, would y'all, would you entertain if 66% of this person's job is to bring, is to bring aircraft to be stationed at the airport and put on our tax rolls, that part of their, their measurement is for their effectiveness is that, and I'm not gonna give you a number, but that number should be enough to at least cover their salary and benefits? So, you know, if, you know, saying that somebody goes out and they get grants, all that kind of stuff for the airport, building the airport just to have a big airport isn't what we're after. It's to get taxable value and hopefully to get commerce in Iredale County so that we have jobs and economic activity and stuff. But I would say if 2/3 of this person's job is to get, is to get more aircraft stationed here, then I would encourage you strongly to put a quantitative goal on there as it relates to taxable, taxable tax base, and it be some percentage for all of their salary at a minimum.
We can work on that.
Yeah.
We have, like I say, with the grant programs, any improvement that's made out there really embedders the airport, which makes it more usable, marketable.
Then we should see that in the increase in tax value. So that's, that's the, ultimately, I mean, that's the whole reason we're supposed to be doing this, right? So to me, that would be the ultimate measure of, you know, is, is it working? You know? Not just is this person working, but is the concept working? Is, are we getting that much additional taxable value in? Because, I mean, not only have we spent a lot of money, but the federal government's spent a tremendous amount of money.
I think one thing that will be extremely important is the outcome of the marketing assessment and plan. As I said, we're looking at trying to take the airport to a higher level, and then there's plenty of room to do so. Whether we get into air carrier type operations, you know, it's all part of the plan that's coming up, and council wants to see the plan. Of course, as I mentioned, they'd like you to share in some of the cost of that, to kind of set the goals and objectives for the airfield. But the primary base is to build, as we have done since 1998, that tax base. We've done an outstanding job and feel we can continue that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, there were two primary concerns. I'll just add to what Mr. Courier says. Two primary concerns that prompted, in my mind, and I think collectively, the mind of the airport commission. And one was certainly of economic development, but to be honest with you, and this is not to be critical of anyone, Mr. Collins did a great job, but that was a part-time job for him. And as far as just looking after the day-to-day operational maintenance of the airfield and responding to concerns of tenants, that, the demands of that aspect of the job outgrew a part-time position in my mind years ago, when what was beginning to happen, there was, there was an unacceptable, in our mind, unacceptable time period between time that an issue arose at the airport and that matter was addressed. And that's not being critical, it was a part-time job for him, and he just simply didn't have the time to take care of that valuable asset that we had in an expeditious manner. So that was the first thing that prompted, prompted it. And the second thing was, was the marketability of the airport. We've got a tremendous asset out there that we think we can market, we think we will market. And as Mr. Courier said, really at the state level, when, when we speak, the aviation wing of the DOT, they pretty much listen to us, because we, we are well-respected over there, and they have a representative regularly at our meetings. If I could, probably, maybe a little difference with Mr. Courier, I think initially, a disproportionate amount of this person's time will be spent on tidying up loose ends at the airport that exists now. I think he's exactly right. I think he's exactly right, that job will change over time, that increasingly, more and more of his time will be taken up with the marketing of the airport. And I would think it's, at some point, if this thing grows the way I and others envision it, I think you'll have a situation where this, this person will be a management position and a marketing director, and they'll have someone under them taking care of the day-to-day maintenance operation of the airport. I think it has the potential to go there. We just fear that with the, the time we're dedicating to the airfield now, as limited as it is, that we've reached the plateau and we stalled out. And if we're gonna, we're gonna get the maximum potential out of that airport, then we have to invest some money in, in continuing to develop the airport and market it. I think, over time, I don't know how much longer I'll be around here, but I think in a few years, somebody will look back and say, this was a good move on our part.
Any further discussion, comments? I would say that I think that balance between the operational requirements that you have, that Commissioner Johnson has outlined, are, you know, that's probably your highest priority initially to, to address. And as you move down the timeline, then that job description, as, as things are moving along like a well-oiled machine, because his, because of his daily presence and a background in general aviation, and that, that whole operational aspect, I would expect that it will shift more, as you've indicated, towards the marketing aspect. I would, I would say it would be helpful, and don't sell yourself short, in terms of developing your measures of effectiveness as far as what the airport brings. It's not just the increase in the tax base based on the aircraft or the hangars that are directly associated with the operation of the airport and bringing business into the airport per se. But it also, and I would, I would encourage, as you develop the marketing aspect of this, to emphasize as well how the, the airport is integrated into the overall economic development and marketing aspect for bringing business generally to Iredale County and its municipalities, because not everybody's going to build a hangar, but just having the ability to fly in, visit a plant, and fly out is going to provide an additional reason to choose Iredale County. And so, there, there needs, you need to connect the dots, or take credit for where that is identified as a reason for a business locating here, that, that you get appropriate credit for that, so to speak. So, the Chair will entertain a motion from any of the members?
Mr. Chairman, I would move, we grant this request for a lump sum of twenty-two thousand dollars per year, up to five years. And that we ask for, we ask for, we ask for an annual report of the success of this person by guidelines adopted by the Airport Commission and the City Council. I don't make that demand with any hesitancy. I really believe with the adoption of this land use plan, its approval, and if we exploit this asset, I think somebody else is gonna be sitting here in ten years with easily a half a billion dollars' worth of tax base out there.
Good. Motion is on the table from Commissioner Johnson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Currier.
Okay, thank you.
There are, that concludes the appointments before the Board. There are no public hearings on the schedule this evening. For administrative matters, many of which were reviewed at the pre-agenda meeting, I'd ask the County Manager, Mr. Smith, to summarize those matters which are on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Item A is a request from the Department of Social Services to recognize allocation of funding to hire personnel and approve Budget Amendment Number Nineteen. Item B is a request from the Finance Department for approval of professional services, of a professional services agreement with Pope, McMillan, Cote, Sheek, and Sheek. Item C is a request from the Health Department to accept grant funds from NCPHPR in the amount of ten thousand dollars and approve Budget Number, Budget Amendment Number Twenty. Item D is a request from the Health Department to accept twelve thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars in Immunization Action Plan funds from the state and approve Budget Amendment Number Twenty-One. Item E is a request from the Health Department to accept the Healthy Communities Grant in Budget Amendment Number Twenty-Two for thirteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Item G is a request from the Clerk to the Board to appoint a voting delegate to the NCACC Legislative Goals Conference. H is a request from Tax Administration for approval of November refunds and releases. And I apologize, I did not mention item I, the request for approval of the minutes for December one, two thousand and fourteen, so we'll have to have a separate motion.
We'll treat that separately. Okay. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yes, I've heard.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. None, motion carries unanimously. Okay, that, on the administrative matters, item F, request from Harmony Volunteer Fire Department to use previously approved ISO funds to purchase rescue equipment. It's under Memo Ten. Mr. David Salivi will present that, along with Chief.
Thank you, Board, and Merry Christmas to each of you. On April third of two thousand and twelve, the Board of Commissioners approved Budget Amendment Number Forty-Three for the appropriation of sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars to Harmony Volunteer Fire Department for the purchase of aerial truck equipment in order to meet Insurance Service Office, ISO, minimum requirements for ISO ratings. The ISO improvements did not use all of the approved funds. There is a balance of approximately twenty-three thousand dollars that was not used at that time. Tonight, Chief Gene Powers of Harmony Volunteer Fire Department is here to request the balance of the approved funds to be used to purchase rescue tools. In your board packets tonight, you, was provided to you a copy of the April third, two thousand and twelve minutes, Budget Amendment Number Forty-Three, and Harmony's letter of request outlining their equipment needs. I will say, I would like to go on to, just to cover the memo, based on the Board's clear direction on May sixth, which was not to create any new rescue districts in the county, and also, at the time that the funds were approved for Harmony, it was understanding that the funds would be used for ISO improvements. With the current direction of the Board of Commissioners, staff does not recommend approval of this request. Thank you.
Chief Flowers? Okay.
Yes. Thank you for letting us come tonight in the hearings.
Thank you for being here. Do you have anything that you would like to add to Mr. Salivi's comments?
No, sir. I appreciate your time.
Are there questions from members of the Board?
Where's the, you've asked to spend the money on some of this rescue equipment. Does this equipment have a direct impact on your ISO rating?
Well, it's a...
Is it needed to lower your ISO rating?
No, sir.
I've got one question for Chief. In your area, what are the local rescue squads not doing that you need this equipment to provide?
It's like I've talked to the chief of the rescue squad. We are not here to replace him or his membership. We just have fifty-one members, and thirty of them are seeking or have acquired to be rescue techs. And as daytime staffing is short, volunteer help, rescue, and fire departments are dwindling, and new applicants don't come out of the woodwork. So, we're just there to help our neighbor and provide a service at a higher level than we have in the past. And Harmony Fire Department does have the largest response area in Iredale County. So, they have trained personnel at RT's in the northern end of Iredale County to help and assist the rescue. It is happening at this time in other departments. And Harmony was one of the last. So, that's why we started doing it, and the money being left over is why we requested it. Instead, they're letting it go back in the general fund.
Does the Harmony Fire Department have a specifically defined rescue district?
We have a fire service area in our contract. But to answer that question, no, we do not have a rescue response area.
Chief Powers, let me share you a concern I have, and then we'll give you an opportunity to address it. As I said earlier, the, the decision by this Board to create rescue service districts for the fire departments in the southern end of the county was, was driven by demographics. I think everybody on this Board will attest to the fact that we didn't wake up one morning deciding that we were gonna do away with a rescue squad. We just had to, we had to respond to, to a need in that southern end of the county. When we did that, we said that we would not create any more rescue districts. In saying that, it was inherent in that statement that, that we would not compromise the integrity of the service area or the financial viability of the rescue squads, which are funding, funded based on area served and call volume. So, that was a statement that we weren't going to create any more rescue districts. And I, and I make a distinction here between the fire department doing, running rescue calls and creating a rescue district. This is a distinction that was, I'm not sure, made clearly in regard to Statesville's initiating rescue response. In my mind, though, my concern is, is that in order to maintain the integrity of that service district, a pretty good tripwire that would keep you from violating that commitment the Board has is the restriction of ISO money for ISO purposes. That this request is a request that asks us to use ISO money for rescue services. So, although we haven't violated the rescue district, that's the first tripwire in my mind to where we're beginning to compromise the integrity of that rescue service district. Am I over-exaggerating that concern, or can you help us feel better about that? I'm not trying to...
No, sir. I do, I do not have an argument for that. But, at this time, we are responding to the wreck or to the house fire, and forcible entry tools are a great asset when someone's life is depending on it, and there is no other rescue tools there. They might be a rescue person that was in the area that responded and got there even before our fire trucks. So, when the rescue tools got there, you would have the trained personnel from the rescue or the fire department to gain the entry into that situation at a timely matter, rather than waiting on a further up the road or further down the road, depending on where it is in the district and the call. It's all about time.
My, you know, my concern over, over this request is, is first of all, it's very difficult to argue against putting, putting tools in the hands of people who are trying to save lives, benefit the community, often with no compensation. Okay? So, that being said, to me, this argument is really about the fact that this Board levied a one cent tax for use specifically to lower, help fire departments lower, the ISO rating. To me, it's, it's, I, I'm, that's what, we made a promise with the taxpayers, I'm gonna take money out of your pocket, we're gonna apply it for a very specific, finite purpose so that in the end, your homeowner's insurance, your fire insurance, if you live in those districts that ended up getting an improved rating, that you would basically get your money back. It was a, it was a financial as well as a public safety decision. It, and, and what we didn't say was, we'll use that money to lower ISO ratings and do stuff, other stuff that we think would be good in the, in the emergency services. So, from that perspective, I'm against granting the request. However, and, and we discussed this at pre-agenda, and, and we've discussed this many times over the past couple of years, as, as Iredale County changes, as the people change, as the requirements that the state has for, you know, who can squirt water on a fire, who can reach in and touch somebody to provide some sort of aid at an accident scene, who can do, who can use those various pieces of equipment, the, the training requirements have changed a good bit. And, and also, the, the fact is, there's a lot more, a lot more demands placed on somebody who's gonna so-called volunteer their services. All of these have changed, changed how we deliver emergency services in the county. And for that reason, our policy and the way that we operate it and all will probably evolve and change in the future. And we can address that, and we can look at that, and we can, we can challenge the way that, the way that we're doing that, and we can challenge our policy. I think that's a totally separate question from the question that's being asked tonight, which is, basically, can we take ISO funds that, that your department graciously and smartly didn't, you didn't, you didn't take the approach of, you gave us X amount of dollars, so we're gonna spend every nickel of it? Okay? You were very thrifty with it. And you've asked, hey, well, can we take some of the money that we saved and, and spend it on something else? And, and as much as I'd like to give you a gift to reward you for not spending all the money that was placed at your disposal, the fact of the matter is, is that money should go back into that fund, that if your department can't use it, another department can, department can use that money to help lower or main, or maintain their improved ISO rating. So, so I am inclined not to support the request. That doesn't mean that, that I'm blanket forever against you having that equipment. Okay? It's just about where you get the money for that equipment. And, and it doesn't, I don't think it should come from this particular fund, funding source.
At this time, could I make another request?
Certainly.
And I guarantee you it'll be an ISO coverage money. Us in Long Hickory have been planning for several years now to put a dry hydrate in Mr. Richard and Ralph Renninger's pond. The money has already been approved. Could we take it out of this money and leave the other money in the ISO money? Since this is gonna go back to general fund, we take all the money out of this from us, earmarked to us, and pay for that project.
Yeah.
That would be ISO money.
I don't know where that project is relative to all the other projects...
It's already been approved.
For the ISO. Mr. Salivi, can you?
The Countywide Fire Tax Board has a...
The Countywide Fire Tax Board has a process for funding dry hydrants, and hydrants are a part of ISO improvements, whether they're dry hydrants, which is in a pond in the north end of the county, or whether they are hydrants that are piped to a water system. Both are ISO improvements, and the county has a process for that. And I think that that particular hydrant request has already been approved. That approval comes through the fire marshal's office. So that is a request, and I'm not sure I would have to, since we don't have, currently have a active County Fire Tax Board, I can work with the finance office to...
Do we have an idea what this dry hydrant cost? I mean, is that a hard number, or?
If I can remember correctly, it was around $12,000.
If we have a process for prioritizing where we put the dry hydrants, let the money go back into the fund, and let the priority, let the process work, otherwise what we're basically doing is earmarking, earmarking stuff, and we're bypassing the process. And if that's the case, then all we've done is, we've negated the process. Let's forget it and just let people come up here and ask us to fund their project and...
All right. I appreciate what you're saying, but they did earn this money.
No, the taxpayers paid the money.
No, but...
And they paid the money based upon what we promised them that we would do with that money.
But by lowering their rate, they earned the $69,000. I totally agree that we should not fund something that is not an ISO-related function with this money. But if they had made this request previous to this, then the $12,000 would have been funded. I mean, they are rewarded for lowering their insurance. That's why they had money left, and that's why they have, they didn't spend all of it. They spent some of it on ISO-related, and they didn't have enough projects to spend it on. But Mr. Powers says they got a dry hydrant that they could spend in their district, and it is their fire department.
It is on the line between us and Long Hickory, where there is no water, and I'd say in the future, there won't be no water lines. And we can't even train unless we use pond water anymore in the northern end of the county.
If I could ask Mr. Slevy. The current quest aside, had Chief Powers come to you and said, we've spent $53,000 of our $69,000 allotted fund, and we have a $12,000 dry hydrant we want to complete that project on, which is ISO-related? Would that matter have even come before this board for approval, or would you have handled that in-house as a, simply accounting for the funds being used?
Well, again, we have a process that we would have normally used with an active Countywide Fire Tax Board. Since we don't have that, we kind of rely on our fire marshal's office to make those approvals or approve that funding. I would say, without a active Countywide Fire Tax Board to say yes or no on a hydrant and using the existing process, we probably would have considered that, and that would not have come before you, because that would be a valid ISO improvement.
In that case, it's not an issue.
Correct. Based on the fact that we do not have a committee to make that determination.
In that case, that's a separate issue we need to address.
I would, I would think at this point, we would deny the request and give some direction, remand this back to Mr. Slevy and the fire marshal, and let them come forward with a recommendation on this dry hydrant, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any further comment, or is there anyone in the general public that would want to be heard on this matter? Hearing none and no further discussion, Chair would entertain a motion. Would you?
I would move that we deny this request because of the concerns expressed earlier in our discussion, and we remand it back to Mr. Slevy and our fire marshal, and let them come back with a recommendation on Mr. Powers' request for a dry hydrant.
That's fair enough.
At a subsequent meeting.
Okay. Motion on the floor. Any further discussion? There being none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign.
Thank you, sir.
Chief Powers, I appreciate your sending the request up. It does highlight, you know, an ongoing issue that we are going to have as there are expanded capabilities and requirements and needs of the general public in terms of integrating all of our emergency response capabilities, whether it's EMS, rescue, fire, and even dispatch through E-Com. There's a lot of, when you address an area, one area over here, sometimes there's second and third effects that affect other organizations and other capabilities. And what we owe the taxpayers is the most effective use of the resources we have that are required to do the job and to support our people that are volunteering and also who are employed either part-time or full-time to support those volunteers. To balance that together with the effective, the efficiencies that we owe the taxpayers so that we don't have unnecessary duplication, unnecessary response based on the level of whatever the circumstances they're responding to. That whole process, and I think highlighted by Commissioner Bowles, you know, is going to be changing, and we are adopting a process of strategic planning where we can look out over the future and look at what our needs are in a number of different areas. And one of those is our public safety and justice area. And Commissioner Bowles and myself will be working with a task force of all the stakeholders that have a piece of the pie, so that we can get everybody around the table and we can understand the real issues involved, and so that we aren't making decisions with, that are, without seeing the big picture and without all the facts and understanding how there are second and third order effects out there, and how we, at the end of the day, can deliver to the taxpayer the most efficient overall response system out there. So we would encourage and will be asking for participation in that process, and so that we can get the best result across the board to posture us going forward. So thank you for the volunteerism and the sacrifice that your memberships and indeed all of our emergency services personnel, particularly those volunteers who do so without remuneration and answer calls at three o'clock in the morning or just before they sit down for Thanksgiving dinner, hear a tone, and they're out the door, and they get cold turkey instead of hot turkey and dressing. So thank you for all the benefits you bring to this community in ensuring the safety of our citizens. And we will, you know, I think you can see that there's a concern over making sure that we are maintaining fiscal integrity in terms of what we've identified as a need for the taxpayer and ensuring that that's executed consistent with that. And I believe that if you work out with Mr. Slevy, as you suggested, this dry hydrant need, then that well, should, sounds like it should be falling within the purview of the intent of those dollars.
Thank you, sir.
Final item on the administrative matters is the approval of minutes for the December 1st, 2014 meeting. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Announcement of vacancies occurring on boards of commissions, boards and commissions. There are no announcements that I'm aware of. Appointments to boards and commissions. There are two appointments to the Aridale County Board of Health. Mr. Smith, do you want to summarize those?
Yes, we have two openings on the Board of Health. Jerry Wayne Turner and Sylvia Chapman have volunteered to serve again.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
The second appointment is on zoning board of adjustment, and Timothy Johnson II has volunteered to serve.
Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion that Mr. Timothy Johnson II, nominate him to serve on the zoning board of adjustments.
Motion led by Commissioner Bowles. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Is there any unfinished business that needs to be addressed for the good of the order? There being none. We move to the public comment period. I believe we have one citizen that is registered, Shirley Huffine. If you'll please come up and come to the podium and please state your name for the
Thank you for listening to me on this situation.
You may want to pull your mic down a little bit there. Thank you.
This is small request concerning some of the ones that you've all heard before, but this has been in my mind for a long time, and I'm trying to figure out how to go about getting this situation. We moved to Statesville in 2000 from Mooresville, and we have a little dog that's very hyper. He loves to run. He loves to play. And we have been having to take him to Cornelius, to the Ramsey Creek Park. And I'm going about twice a week, which, with the traffic and all of that stuff, it's taken me about an hour and a half. And I know this doesn't seem like a big thing to you all, but when I'm down there and I tell people I have to come all the way from Statesville, they say, you know, you don't have a dog park in Statesville? And I said, no. Well, I called the mayor the first of May, and I talked to Mayor Cooté, and he told me at that time, that was before the primary, and he told me that he did not have a dog, so he really didn't think it was that important situation. And I told him that it was far away, and he promised me at that time that he would, he said my name and my number, and told me he would call me back, and that he would check on the environmental situations of what would take place if we had a dog park. And I never heard from him. And so then I was, when I went to vote, I talked to Mr. Mallory, and he came up to me, and I was talking to Steve Ellis about a dog park. And I said, what are my chances? Who do I see? Who do I talk to? And you told me that I could come to the commissioners' meeting and present this to you all and tell you that this, you know, to some people, it may not seem important, but when I drive that far and with the traffic the way it is, and there's a lot of people. I know when I'm down at Ramsey Creek, sometimes there are around 25 dogs down there just playing, and everybody is taking care of their dogs. They have to be, have all the shots and all that. I know there's legal things that has to be done, but it's something that I think would benefit Aridale County or maybe the city or whatever, just something that we could have to be enjoy. I know there's a lot of parks in Statesville that you walk, but some dogs need more than just walking. And I know when I go to McAniston Park, I see a lot of land there that just seemingly is there wasted. You know, you can walk around and all these other parks. But I would just like to ask you to just think about it and see if something could be done about, maybe not now, but in the future. I know you're trying to improve Aridale County and on some of the things that we've been needing, and I would appreciate if you would just think about it and see if it could be done, and I appreciate you listening to my request.
Thank you, Ms. Huffine. Any questions from members of the board or comments? I think this is a matter that, you know, being a city resident, you know, there's some concurrent jurisdiction between being a citizen of the county and a citizen of any municipality. And the level of services generally given by cities is higher than that of a county, which is focused primarily on essential services. And one of the reasons that people choose to live in an incorporated area is to have a higher level of service and to pay a corresponding higher rate of tax for that service. There is, you're not the only person that has a dog that needs to be walked, and you'd want a safe location to do that in and one which you can let them run. You know, we're blessed in this county with a lot of unincorporated areas and a lot of farmland, and, you know, it would seem to me that even in the market, that there, that some enterprising landowner might take a corner of a pasture and fence it off and say, you know, I'm going to charge admission for, to a, for a dog park here. And I don't know what kind of zoning issues they may run into, but I would ask our county manager to discuss these issues with the Parks and Rec Department and also the Planning Department, and just see, you know, what kind of options may be out there that obviously can leverage the resources we already have as opposed to spending money on creating a dog park. But you may be able to meet some citizens' needs at a fairly low cost and low effort. It just may be a matter of working through some legalities. And so I would refer that matter to our staff to investigate, and we have your address. If you can get us an email as well, then they can respond to you and let you know what's in the realm of the possible.
All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Huffine. All right. Is there any new business come before the board? There hearing none. Mr. Smith, your report?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to pass down a spreadsheet and a map. This is a follow-up from conversation that took place at our retreat this last Friday. And let it get down. This is information from Malia Miller, our tax assessor, and it's basically a breakdown of the number of qualified sales in 2014, the average sales price, the median sales price, and the average square footage of the home that was sold. And this is by township. So that's what's shown on your spreadsheet, and there's a corresponding township map. And this is for your information, but I feel like this is a good indicator of growth in this county and obviously the values, based on how she's broken this out, of single-family residential in this county.
The second item I have, fairly minor, but I just want to make an announcement that government or county government offices are going to be closed next week for Christmas, Wednesday through Friday. However, emergency services will be operating throughout the holiday and will be business as usual. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. We will be moving into a closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-38... We will be moving into a closed session pursuant to General Statute one forty-three dash three-eighteen point eleven, subsection A five, concerning a real property purchase. Shall we officially adjourn after that or presently? I don't know, I sort of have a point of order.
If you would make a motion to go into closed session and then come out, we'll adjourn.
Okay. Well, I'll entertain a motion to move into closed session.
The move.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously.